Ron Gould.
Has left the conference.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is November the 9th. This is a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. There is just one item on the agenda today, but I'll ask the clerk of the board now to see if Supervisor Johnson is on the telephone, as well as Supervisor Gould.
Supervisor Johnson?
Present.
Supervisor Gould? Supervisor Gould? He is not on the line at this time.
Okay, so we do have a quorum even though Supervisor Gould is not present, and hopefully he'll be here shortly. First item on the agenda is brought to us by Sam Elters, our county manager. It's going to be a discussion of possible action enforcement of the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19 and Mojave County's compliance process for private business. Mr. Elters, I'll turn it over to you.
Madam Chairman, Board members, good afternoon.
Ron Gould.
Has joined the conference.
Okay, thank you for joining Supervisor Gould.
At the last...
Thank you for having me.
At the last board meeting, the board directed staff and myself to reach out to other Arizona counties and inquire about the implementation of the governor executive order related to the COVID-19 virus. As you know, the executive order has two components: education and enforcement. We have reached out to the...all the counties, received responses from some, but not all. And at this time, I would like to ask Denise, our health, public health department director, to step up to the podium and share with you our findings related to our inquiries. So with that, Denise, it's yours.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll just go over a brief overview. As of early September, public health was directed to follow the approved process for enforcement of the governor's executive order related to specific businesses. These businesses included restaurants, bars, movie theaters, my goodness, gyms, fitness centers, and water parks and tubing operations. We have done so with fidelity following that plan, and I will have our county attorney come up and speak to some of the numbers of these cases and the compliance results that we've received. Ultimately, I can tell you, generally speaking, that we've had a lot of success moving forward with compliance from businesses. Sometimes we would go in, of course, and on the first visit, they would not be in compliance. A second visit would follow 48 hours later, and in most instances, we've received compliance during those second visits and observed that those businesses were in compliance. The success rate of education is very strong, and we are interested in continuing these efforts to reduce the spread of the virus, especially in light of the fact that our case count continues to go up. It looks like that would be a part of our strategy moving forward is to ensure that we're providing that education out in the community and continue to do so. If it would please the board, I'd like to have County Attorney Knutson come up and speak to some of the numbers, and she can talk about our success rate as well.
Absolutely. So, good afternoon, County Attorney Lenore Knutson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Bishop and the supervisors, as well as our county manager and our...
Ron Gould.
Has left the conference.
colleague, Ryan Esplin. I have provided to all of you a total of our documentation, and I have my colleague Jeff helping me out today as well. And I can put up the last page of this spreadsheet that you all have received now for the purpose of the audience, because it does go through totals, which is where I'd like to start. These numbers are current as of Friday and do not include any activity from the weekend or today, but as of Friday, these are the total numbers. If you look at the last page of this spreadsheet, we received 92 complaints in total. Of those 92 complaints, some of those were the same business, so this does not reflect 92 different businesses. It does reflect 92 complaints. There is some duplication because there were complaints filed against the same business in a handful of cases. Of those 92 complaints, an investigator went on site and immediately confirmed that 54 were in compliance. So well over half of them are in compliance at the first inspection. At that point, they receive a letter saying, "Thank you for paying attention to the health and safety of Mojave County residents. This complaint is closed. We find your business in compliance." Of the remaining number, that stage-one violation, 38 continued on to stage-two. And those businesses got a letter indicating that there would be another inspection. That letter was typically served by a process server. Also, before leaving the premises, the inspector provided the business with a copy of the inspection. In fairness to them, it didn't seem right to go back on site within 48 hours if we hadn't told them that we'd be there. Again, stage-one is completely educational. There are no other compliance activities going on at that stage. And the health department has also used that as an opportunity to provide equipment. So for instance, businesses that needed face shields or other protective equipment, it was provided at that time, as well as copies of the executive order and, again, a copy of the checklist that was used for the inspection, which is an Arizona Department of Health checklist. So if we continue on then at stage-two, of the 38, 32 were found to be in compliance. After they received the education, the businesses by far and away came into compliance. Now, if you're a math whiz, you're going to see that there's a little discrepancy here. And I'll let you know that early on in that process, because 32 plus four is 36, not 38. But early on in that process, we were on a learning curve. We were building this and flying it at the same time. And so there were two anomalies early on that did not result in each stage being covered. The end result is of the 38, we had 32 in immediate compliance after education. And four of those cases, then those businesses went on to stage-three. And of the stage-three, three of the four came into compliance. And at this point, it is not...it's a little more directive. It's educational as well, but it's a little more directive in terms of, these are the specific things that were noted that you need to comply with in order to get this complaint closed and move on to...rather than moving on to stage-four. It's also important to notice that, according to the procedures adopted by this board, when a business corrected at stage-three, then there were two random inspections over the next two weeks just to ensure continued compliance. And as you can see, of the three businesses that made it into stage...of the four businesses that made it into stage-three, three came into compliance, and the follow-up inspections, the two random inspections, confirmed that they continued to be in compliance. So the process worked. By far and away, the majority closed at the stage of education only. By stage-two, there was a significant majority that had closed, and four out of 92 went on to stage-three. Of the businesses that went on to stage-three, and this box represents all of our work, because at each and every stage, these businesses are getting letters, they're getting service, they're getting follow-up, they're getting asked, "What can we do to help come into compliance? What can we provide you? How can we assist?" And of these businesses, there's only one file out of all of these that is reflected on here that got an order to comply. So of the 92, we have one business that did not come into compliance by anyone's metric. This is a program that works based on education. This is a program that helped maintain the safety of Mojave County citizens and kept Mojave County in compliance with the executive orders. If anybody has any questions about the numbers, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Supervisor Angus.
So I didn't hear anything about the fines. So at what point would the fines kick in?
There's one business that reached that stage, and that is the one under order to comply.
Okay, and we are the only county who does fines. Is that correct, from your research, Sam?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, I'm going to turn that over to Ryan, Attorney Esplin. He reached out and spoke directly to many of his counterparts. So if you do not mind, I'm going to ask him to respond to that.
Okay, well, maybe that should wait until we're done with this, or do you think it's relevant?
I can answer right now.
The question's asked, so I would let the attorney answer that question.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that nobody does that. I just...I think what it is, is just from what I gather, and again, I contacted as many counties as we could, that the ones that answered, they just haven't got to that point yet. There was one county that got to the point where they revoked the business license of a business, which obviously would have a huge impact on their finances. But the other ones, it just...it seemed as if they hadn't got to that point yet where somebody...I mean, most of the time, they got the voluntary compliance, similar to what you see here, where you have 90-something businesses that all voluntarily complied, and you had one that didn't.
But the fining comes from the Board of Supervisors, as we did.
No, no. It's by statute. It's specifically in the statute.
Oh, if you're doing Title 36.
And that's what...
But this...but so when you were reaching out to these other counties, did you ask them if they were doing Title 36?
Well, I assume...
We've asked.
I assume they were, because that's the authority that allows them to do that.
But they're not fining, so how do you know that?
Because they haven't got to that stage yet. I mean, I didn't inquire specifically whether they were doing Title 36, but when they're talking about, and they're saying, you know, for example, Coconial County, it says, "Coconial County will only give a notice of violation." You know, that's language that you would see in Title 36.
So in penal, it says, "To violations which are public nuisances under 36601 will follow..." So is fining a normal public nuisance complaint process?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Under penal, because I'm trying to find our like counties. "A phone call education for complaints specific to violations which are public nuisances under 36601A will follow normal public nuisance complaint process." Is fining $1,000 a day, is that a normal public nuisance?
Yeah, it can get to that, yes.
Right. But so you're telling me in all of penal county, which is double, you know, a lot bigger than us, they haven't reached any of that yet?
I don't think they have. I don't...I didn't hear back specifically from penal county. That was another part that heard that, but I probably have not, nor have we, only with the exception of one business.
Okay. But when we voted to do that $1,000 a day fine, which I wasn't here, if it's part of the process, how come we had a vote on it?
That was my question. What we're doing here is we're trying to...you have the governor who says, "Okay, here's the executive order." And then the executive order then comes down, and we are tasked with enforcing that. Well, we're trying to follow what the people want, the elected officials. The elected official said, "Well, hey, this is the kind of the approach that we want you to do. So out of respect to the board, we brought it to you so that we can get your collective decision on that." That's why we did that, to give it to you, to say, you know, "Here's our idea. Here's what we thought. What would you like to do?" That's how we brought it to you out of that respect.
So but if we said today that we didn't want to fine people $1,000 a day, we want education, we could do that through this board?
Well, let me back up. We are educating.
I know that. Oh, I know that. And I know, and it has been successful. I realize that.
But I would say this, that my answer to that question is this. Could the county attorney's office on its own do it? Probably, they would have the legal authority. I'd have to check, but probably, but we probably would not. We would defer to the board here, and if the board said, "Please don't do that," we would likely respect that. I think we would. That's what we've tried to do this whole time, is to respect what the board has. So if the board voted to do that, we would probably say, "Yes, that's correct."
Can the board vote to ignore the governor's executive order?
The board could vote to do that. Obviously, there's consequences for any kind of action, but the board could vote to do that.
And, you know, I know I've asked this question over and over, and if it has been answered, I apologize, but did we ever find out what the ramifications would be to this county if we voted to ignore the governor's executive order?
It's still the same answer as before. We don't know yet what will happen. There's possibilities. It increases the risk and certain things, but whether...what will happen, we don't know. I mean, it's...I can't foresee the future, but I've already disclosed the possible risks that are there. We think the risks are low, and we've talked about that with Supervisor Gould as well. In terms of going forward, I don't...I don't know the answer.
May I? Yes, thank you. Couple thoughts and also possibly another response. And I can hear that the $1,000 a day is of concern to you, and I understand that. On August 10th, August 13th, and then in September, early September, the steps were reviewed with this board for a couple reasons. One is because frankly, we knew this wasn't going to be popular. We knew that there would be concern. In order to put investigators out there, inspectors out there in the field, we felt as though they needed to have the support of the board. So one of the reasons that we brought it back on multiple occasions and made flow charts and showed the board was so that the board was very clear about what they were authorizing so that inspectors would not go out there without the support of the board. That was critically important in this process. They've been yelled at, they've been filmed, they've been circled, they...you know, this is not an easy process, and certainly not one that they would want to voluntarily undertake without the support of the board. So in doing that, we tried to make it very clear that this is the authority, this is the directive from the executive order, and we were ready to follow whatever the board chose. The board voted and chose implementation which included the $1,000 a day. Again, 91 out of 92 businesses or instances of complaints came into compliance, short of that. One business essentially chose not to come into compliance with that. Going forward at this point, if the board opted to forego the fining component, the $1,000 a day, I think that would be within the board's purview. If the board opted out of any kind of inspection or enforcement completely, although the response is uncharted, we're not in familiar territory because we haven't dealt with the pandemic of this nature that resulted in executive orders requiring us to enforce. I don't know what the response would be. But there is one other issue that the board has to consider, and that's that funds were accepted through the IGA for enforcement purposes. So it may...
Roger Gould.
Now, I've brought up the fact that that $25,000 was for enforcement, and I've been told, "No, it's education." But now, Attorney Knutson, you're telling me that that's enforcement. I always believed it was enforcement, and that's why I voted against it.
Sure.
But I seem to get two different answers. Every time, it's either stated education or enforcement, and it was clearly used for enforcement, unless you want to combing all the words into ediforsment.
Well, I think there's a much simpler response than that. Out of respect for the whole board, and the whole board voted on this, the respectful response is that enforcement includes education. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Burley.
Supervisor Gould, members of the board. The focus of that particular contract is education and technical assistance. Very clear in the language of that contract that that would be the focus of any kind of enforcement activities. It doesn't lend itself, it doesn't provide a lot of language that says, "You will do X, Y, and Z" in terms of the Title 36 option to pursue.
But essentially, what that was doing was accepting the enforcement of unregulated businesses, businesses that had never been regulated by the state or regulated by the county before.
Of sorts, yes, absolutely.
And then those folks then had to sign away their rights to open up their business again.
You know, I...
Without it going through the legislature.
Right, right, and that's...
So essentially, it's...we're back to an edict where the governor, through us, created another level enforcement to enforce businesses that had never had any kind of enforcement on them before. The health department did not inspect gyms.
That is correct.
It did not inspect movie theaters other than their food operation.
That is correct. That is correct. And it's by virtue of the governor's executive order that we were performing the enforcement.
So by accepting that money, then that then made us liable to enforce those rules?
I don't know that it actually provided the language that forced us into a enforcement of Title 36. The guidance in the contract, the scope of work, is technical assistance and education. So I think it provides and lends itself to a flexible approach to how we interpret education within the contract.
And if I may answer that as well, just...
Sure.
I'll say that if we didn't even have the contract, these activities would still move forward. The contract did not...we took the...we voted and accepted the contract so that it will assist them with the education component, but had the board voted against the contract, they still likely would have been moving forward because the governor issued the executive order. And I understand your position that you disagree with the executive order, the governor's authority to do that, but the fact of the matter is, the executive order was issued, and so there was...it was public health's responsibility to move forward with the action. Had that contract not even been placed, they still would have done this action. They still would have gone forward with this.
I don't believe that the governor has the authority to force our health department to enforce things that were never enforced before. The governor has... The governor has a police force. It's called the Department of Public Safety. And at that time, I said, "Let the governor send his own cops up to do this," because our sheriff clearly had said he was not going to enforce it, because he also believes that this is out of over the governor's purview.
And what I'll say is that it's a disagreement that you have with the governor, and that's a position you'll have to take with the governor. There has been court actions on those executive orders, and the courts have upheld the governor's authority.
But not the governor's authority to force our county health department to enforce his order.
Well, it's public health departments that are enforcing it that brought forward that action. I mean, the idea in that action was that public health departments would be enforcing the order. And that's the whole premise of it, is that the government would issue that executive order under the premise that the public health department would then enforce it.
But I don't believe that was a portion of the lawsuit. It came out of Maricopa County anyway.
There was a couple of different lawsuits, right? There was the lawsuit that was in federal court early on in the pandemic. Then there was a second one with the gyms, specifically to the gyms. And I mean, I don't think they addressed the specific issue of whether local public health departments would do it, but I think it was the whole premise is that the local health departments would do it, because that's specifically in the executive order that they're challenging.
I don't think that they have the ability to force us to do it, is my point. They delegate their authority to us, but we have to choose to take that authority. I don't think they can force us to take that authority.
We...I don't know. That's a good question. It's a legitimate question, you know, something I haven't thought about, but I think if you look at the executive order where they're talking about under Title 36, and Title 36 specifically allows public health authority to do those things, that's why they're signing the public nuisance statute, because that allows the local health authorities to do it. But you raise a valid point.
You're using the word "allows" and not "shall."
Sure. And I'll tell you, the board...
We are in uncharted water.
It is.
This whole pandemic, we were in uncharted water. Everything that we do is on unplowed ground.
Absolutely.
Because we're, I think, because we're outside of anything that we thought would ever happen.
But I will say, the board has collectively accepted that responsibility by directing public health on multiple occasions, voting in favor of what they've been doing.
Right, a majority of the board.
Correct, a majority.
Which doesn't include me, but...
I know, but it is collectively the board. The board, the will of this board, has said this is what it is, and this is what they're doing. And if you wish to go a different direction, then we will respect that, absolutely. If the majority of the board says, "We want to go a different direction," then they will go a different direction.
Sure.
And that's what we're here today to decide, is to have this debate and hear comments from the public. So Lenore, I'd like, if I may, to have you explain the health department's position on public nuisance and how we enforce just regular public nuisance via Title 36 without any COVID. What are the steps that the health department has been taking for years in regards to that?
Chairman Bishop, the steps are very similar, and we drew from the public nuisance system to create this system. It's a complaint-driven system that results in a series of inspections, communication to the owner to come into compliance, and it's typically a cleanup activity, to clean up a mess of some kind. And if they don't, then there's more communication and more attempts to get the person to comply. They also offer assistance. They'll give dump passes and other kinds of things to help them to come into compliance. At the end of the day, though, if they choose not to come into compliance for whatever reason, then the county can engage in abatement activities. And when that happens, at that point, the same $1,000 a day fine is applicable, and it can also result in a court case to compel compliance. And it also...there's another step in that process, and that is leaning on the property. That Mojave County would take out a lien on that property for the cost of the abatement. That is not part of this process. And by far and away, we have complaints all the time about Mojave County not being diligent enough or excited enough to go out there and clean up Mojave County, so...
And how long has Mojave County been enforcing those rules under Title 36?
I would say, obviously, that predates my time, but I'm thinking about the numbers of the ordinances that speak to enforcement, and I would say, you know, easily 20 to 25 years in the current iteration. There may have been earlier iterations and enforcement activities about which I'm not aware, but I would say 20 to 25 years in our current iteration of the ordinance and the enforcement activities. The other point I wanted to make, which circles back just a little bit, but is very germane to this, and that is that Mojave County has entered into delegation agreements with the Arizona Department of Health for 30-plus years to take on the responsibilities dedicated to us. We've already agreed to do that, and that's true for environmental quality, that's true for environmental health, and that's true for public health. Those delegation agreements have been signed by previous boards over the years and possibly even Chairperson Bishop in the last couple of years, 2018. So maybe it was Chairperson...
So we've been enforcing our health regulations for decades.
Yes.
We're doing that to keep citizens safe, I assume, and if violators ignore the request to comply, then they're fined? Is it $1,000 a day, or is it a smaller fine?
It's $1,000 a day, and it is not at all unusual to...and this is true historically, we've actually relaxed that standard a little bit to try and provide more education on the front end, and more efforts on the front end to get people to come into compliance. But you can look through court case after court case after court case in Mojave County, and you'll have the abatement cost plus $10,000, and that amount is then assessed as a lien against that property. The $10,000 fining, again, we are doing everything we can to get people to come into compliance beforehand. So in recent years, that it has been an intentional tool to focus on education and assistance rather than fining, just as we have in this system.
So is this fine in any way to enrich Mojave County, or is it just to get a point made that you've got some teeth in enforcement and... Or is it just to get, get a point made that you've got some teeth in enforcement and if they don't comply, then, then that's a tool? And that's a tool that could be reversed by this board. If a business pushed back and said no and was fined a day to, all the way up to a maximum of $10,000. If circumstances were such, this board could reverse those fines, could we not?
I think the board has the authority to take that action if they-
Or a judge could, could possibly do that. I'm not sure, but-
And just to be clear, despite some information that went out previously, the one business that has received the 24-hour notice order to comply and the fine, there is no court action pending on that.
So there's no fines and no court action pending?
No, there is a fine, because that is a Mojave County fine pursuant to Title 36. But there is no court action, there's no injunction to close the business at this point in time, never has been.
Okay, so how does all this compare to what we're doing now under the governor's executive orders? When we go out and inspect, what are we doing in addition to what we've done for the last two or three decades?
So, we have formalized the process, first of all, and then educated the public about that. So in the, and I'll use environmental health nuisance complaint world, the most recent, Director Burley and her predecessor had both started focusing more on education, but those steps are not as clearly delineated. So one thing we did was build a system with clear steps for education purposes, to be able to say, these are the stages that will be enforced. The other thing is, we are giving them immediate feedback before the inspector leaves the premises. They're given immediate feedback on how to come into compliance. And if you, I have copies of, just blank copies of the letters that go out today in an effort to gain compliance. We are communicating at every stage of this process in order to get the businesses to come into compliance. So I would say there's more focus on education in this system. Because it's a public health risk during a pandemic, the timelines, and we talked about these in meeting with the county manager, and when we brought them to the board, it was with timelines attached. Because of the public health risks associated with the pandemic, one difference, fundamental difference from, say, a garbage complaint or a junk complaint, is that these timelines are quite a bit abbreviated, because the quicker businesses come into compliance, the more opportunity they have to stay open, and also, the more opportunity we have to protect the citizens of Mojave County.
Okay, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Burley. When the health inspectors go out and inspect, we'll just use a restaurant for example, what are you inspecting for more than what you've inspected for, for the last three decades? I mean, I know now you're, you're also checking for social distancing and for the use of masks, but is there anything in addition to what you already have requirements for that businesses are used to complying with, like washing your hands and, you know, that sort of stuff? So can, can you kind of go over what you would do normally, and then what you do in addition based on the executive orders, please?
Certainly, yes. Chairman Bishop, members of the board. Our focus when we go in for a restaurant inspection is, of course, the food code. That is our primary responsibility there, in ensuring that people who are preparing food, serving food, are following the food code appropriately. When we go into a business for a COVID complaint, in addition to looking at the mask enforcement for both customers and employees, we are also looking at the physical distancing, whether or not either tables are removed or marked off, whether or not there's plexiglass potentially that businesses have put up to create barriers. We're also looking at signage for those particular businesses, to see whether or not they put up any sign about, you know, do not enter if you're feeling sick, talking about COVID symptoms, a lot of prevention messages. And then beyond that, you know, those are the real focus of our efforts there, whether or not they have a policy regarding sick employees and allowing sick employees to work or not work. And I'm working off the cuff, but those are, those are what you're going to see in terms of our primary difference. Now, with food code, it's also stated that sick employees are not allowed to work. And so it's really, there's a lot of overlap there in that type of enforcement. But the signage is a little different than what you've probably seen in the past, and then certainly, physical distancing and the masks.
Okay, and then my last and final question, before I ask other supervisors for their input, is I've been asking about the requirement to, to accept anonymous complaints. That's, that's kind of a, an area that I would like to see some changes in, but I wanted, I wanted staff to check and find out whether or not we are required to take anonymous complaints, or can we specify that complaints must, must identify themselves, but, but we could keep that confidential unless we get a request for public information or it goes to court or some other reason requires that person to be identified? So is there any information on that yet?
We did have staff check through all of the statutes and rules, and we did reach out to ADHS and ask the same question, because they do accept anonymous complaints. So we were asking about statute and how they were following statute as well. ADHS referred to the governor's executive order and emergency measures outlined by the Director of Public Health for the state as authority there. However, we do not find anything in our statutes that indicates that we could collect anonymous complaints. What we do find is a statute of complaints in public record that does indicate that we should be collecting names, and that those do become public record.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson?
I have a question for Ms. Burley. Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Burley, in a normal inspection in a restaurant, I believe that you do the temperature checks in coolers.
Correct.
Make sure that the handwashing basins are close to different proximities?
That is correct.
As I recall, it cost me a great deal of money to put some handwash basins in a 15,000-square-foot building. What is the requirement for gloves?
For those individuals that are preparing foods.
Okay.
They must wear gloves during-
And that's, that's to the point I'd like to talk about today. So we're insisting on washing hands, and we're insisted upon folks wearing gloves. How many times have we inspected or closed a business for not wearing gloves?
That would be rare, Supervisor Watson.
I can't recall one. I think everybody kind of recognizes the value of wearing gloves, preparing food.
Correct.
My next question is this, and we may have to go to legal for that. But if I were to frequent a restaurant and come down with a COVID-19 afterwards and find out that people preparing food did indeed have that COVID virus also, what would be the liability of that establishment for my catching COVID-19 if I could track it back to that occurrence?
So-
Mr. Espin?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's basic tort principles that we talk about in tort law and things. So, you know, businesses have a duty to their customers, a duty to make sure things are safe and healthy. If they breach that duty and it causes harm to someone, then they could be liable. So they have a duty. If they've breached the duty, and if that breach causes harm, and there's costs associated with that harm, then they'll have to pay. So if, if that were to happen, then a business could be liable. They could be, because they have breached their duty. The challenge is, and I'm trying to make sure everybody's aware of the full issues here, is the challenge is, it would be difficult, it is difficult to prove that, because we're at a community spread right now. Because of that community spread, it's difficult to pinpoint it to the restaurant. But if you could, then I think that the business could potentially be liable, because it has breached its duty.
So if, if we were to stand firm on a requirement for mask or shield in food preparation, that would lessen the liability somewhat in the face of a court action?
Well, as long as they're complying. So it would, it would be a proof, it'd be an evidence battle in court, where if, if the business can say, hey, we, we followed with what the county had asked, we followed with the guidelines that the state has, we had masks for our employees, the employees were using them, they were washing their hands, they were doing the things that were required, then I don't even think the plaintiff would have a case at all against the business.
It would lessen the liability, correct?
Yeah, but, but on the flip side, if the, if, on the flip side, if the regulations are in place, and somebody, if a business fails to follow the regulations, then the plaintiff would have a stronger case, because now the plaintiff can say, here are these standards, and the business fell below those standards, and so because of that, they're more likely that they are responsible for it. So it's a double-edged sword. If you're following it, it would help lessen the liability. If you're not following it, then you increase the, the exposure to liability.
Thank you for pointing that out. Thank you, Ms. Burley.
Supervisor Johnson, do you have any comments or questions?
None, Madam Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment about liability. The legislature was supposed to have addressed this, but they decided that they would go home early, rather than finish their job and stay like the rest of the elected bodies. Otherwise, we would have had an answer on this. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. You know, all this other discussion about, you know, public nuisance and how we go about it, I don't think that that is the issue that we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about enforcing an executive order that is not a law. So, that, and again, we are, and we're doing, everyone's doing the best they can and interpreting it the way they want to interpret it. But I think this board has a lot more power than we have exerted, I'm not going to say have been told, but apparently, we do. And that's why we're here today. I, I do want to hear what the people that it's affecting, because, again, these are random businesses, and Supervisor Gould made a point that these are businesses that the state, the county have not historically regulated. And that, that is problematic, as far as, you know, what we've done in the past, that's all by state, you know, by state law. This is by an executive order. And that gives us a lot more leniency on what we do. So I, I'll, I'd like to talk again, but after maybe we hear from some people.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Espin, I have a question for you. Could you, one more time, please, explain the executive orders in regards to them being not a law? I mean, everybody says executive orders are not a law, and they're not enforceable. So your, your opinion on that, please?
Well, there's, in Title 26, the Arizona revised statutes, in Title 26, it authorizes the governor to declare state of emergency, and which the governor has done. And once the governor has declared that emergency, then the governor can issue executive orders, and which the governor has been doing since March. There's approximately, I mean, lastly counted around 50 or so, there's probably more than 50 now, different executive orders that address various different things. And as part of that, the, the, the executive orders, the statutes in Title 26 says that they can be enforced. And then there's procedures, for example, that law enforcement would be authorized to enforce the executive orders. I mean, there's all kinds of different law, different things that constitutes a law. There are laws that are passed by the legislature. Those are what we commonly see. Those are laws that are passed by the board here, those are the ordinances that we have. So you have state statutes, you have ordinances. You also have the common law, the law that you will often see from the court, where the court has crafted things through common law and through things, there's been judicial rulings that, that what we call the law. So there's different ways that you can characterize what the law is. And here, it's one that the, that the governor has the authority to issue, and the governor has the authority to do those things. If you wish to challenge that, you can go to court, and as I said, it has been done on multiple occasions. I, to my knowledge, there's still another one that's pending, the challenge to the bars, because the bars are still, have different set of rules than the gyms and different set of rules than the restaurants. So they're challenging that one as well. So these are laws under the, under the umbrella of a statute that was authorized under Title 26, but they're not the statute that you're going to see if you were to open up a book and see Arizona revised statutes. You wouldn't see that.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm so sorry. Can I just say one more quick thing?
Of course.
I think a lot of this comes down to the masks. Am I right? Okay, so I received a text today from a constituent, and she, this is what she wrote. I have an MBA in healthcare administration, a BS in healthcare management, and a CPHQ certified professional in healthcare quality. So she sounds pretty authoritative on this.
What does all that mean?
It means that she's a professional, and she's got an opinion. She's got a better opinion than anyone on this board about masks. Surgical masks for exhalation protection only. N95 respirator for inhalation protection with added face mask of plastic will protect some exhalation particles. A cloth mask analogous to building a chain link fence in the yard to keep the mosquitoes out. Absolutely ineffective, except perhaps psychologically. Silver and copper infused masks might provide some limited antiviral protection. So my point is, the mask science has, is not a universal accepted science. And I think that's why people are so upset, that they're being forced to something that, like what we talked about at our last meeting, that we are choosing the science that we want to follow. There's lots of science, just like I read, people with differing opinions about it. So people are feeling that they're being forced by their government to do things and lose business because of the science that we are choosing to accept. And as Americans, I'd be pretty mad, too.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to add something to Ryan's talk about law. The, the problem in the situation that we're in is the, the governor generally is checked by the legislature. The governor can issue an executive order, and the legislature can come in and undo that. But since they adjourned and went home, they are not allowed to call themselves back into special session without the signing of a petition of, of two-thirds of their members. So they can't, in our, in our divided political situation that we're in, they cannot get two-thirds to call themselves back into special session. So effectively, there's no check on the governor's power. And that, I've got some heartburn with that, and that's just situational, the way that it played out. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments before I start calling the public up to speak? Persons, when you come up to the podium, please state your name and the city that you reside in. You'll have three minutes to say what's on your mind as it relates to this one agenda item, and this agenda item only. This will be discussion about the enforcement of the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19 and Mojave County's compliance process for private business. So if there's anything that's outside of that realm, we, we won't allow you to speak outside of this realm. So this is very limited discussion, and we will start with Anna Admire. The next will be Carrie Chastain. If you'll move toward the front of the... Is Carrie here?
Yes.
Okay, you want to move on and be on deck? Maybe we can get through these a little faster that way.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. I have a tickle in my throat today. I'm not sick, promise. Okay. Thank you very much for letting me speak today. Since you covered part of what I wanted to say, so I'm going to kind of start in the middle. One of the things I wanted to say is, you know, we're eight months into this, and we've morphed from mandatory, into mandatory masks and social distancing with a few short weeks to flatten the curve, to ensure our hospitals were not- ensure our hospitals were not overwhelmed. Then, of course, you know, the public has been going through panic and fear and hysteria because every day, the social media and the TV has ads that tell you that you need to social distance and wear masks because we need to protect everyone. Now, all of this is being fueled by, you know, the daily death counts. And now, we've morphed into hysteria over rising number of cases, excuse me, which is really meaningless because it doesn't really matter how many cases you have. The virus isn't going to sit there and wait for somebody to go get tested. If they're infected, they're going to either go to the hospital, recover, or they're going to die. Now, it's evident that our county has almost non-existent deaths for over a month, which means that our emergency seems to be over. This brings me to the topic today. What's disturbing to me is that the county implemented this enforcement right after our local businesses were allowed to reopen. Many of them are still struggling to keep themselves afloat financially. I know one restaurant owner who broke down in tears when I asked her how she was holding up operating her business, her restaurant, at reduced capacity. So I ask you, does it make sense to harass, excuse me, and threaten them with punitive fines to threaten to close their businesses when big box stores are allowed to have hundreds of people inside? And especially now, since our average weekly deaths are virtually at zero for the last month. The county says they must continue the compliance enforcement order, excuse me, because of the governor's emergency order is directing them to do so. But logically speaking, just for me, I would think that a reasonable person would conclude, if our cities and counties have rescinded everything because there is no emergency, state of emergency, why would we be subject to any part of the governor's emergency order? I strongly urge you to stop all compliance enforcement in our county. Please stop destroying people's livelihoods, bankrupting citizens, enforcing people to wear face coverings. Please stop masking our children, who are not at risk to themselves or others. Okay. And in ending...
Thank you very much, Ms. Admire.
Okay. Can I just say one last thing? The CDC provides guidance only. Guidance and mask mandates and proclamations are not laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carrie Chastain, you have three minutes to speak. Please give us your name and the city you're from. And then Jeff Haas, you'll be on deck.
Carrie Chastain, Kingman. I didn't plan on speaking, but I've been making notes. My, this meeting has made me very angry. Well, I was angry anyway, but it's sad. We are not a communist country yet. It is not the government's role to protect us from germs. We are in our own constitution, where our own constitution, where in our own constitution does it say you can quarantine and isolate healthy people or make healthy people wear masks that don't even keep the germs out, but rather put germs closer to your mouth and nose? I bet you most masks that are worn have, are ton, you know, full of germs. And the public nuisance law, how is that interpreted? The interpretation is really far reaching for that to require masks. How is not wearing a mask a public nuisance? I know, and I know everybody here knows what business closed because of this. And they weren't bothering anybody. Everybody had their own choice to not wear a mask. That, we are adults. We should have control of our own bodies. You are not our parents. You know, the government, government does not have that right to say, oh, we need to control you and your germs. We have had other pandemics in the past. This overreach of power has never been enacted for the, for those. Never before were healthy people made to wear masks and isolate, not in this country. I understand that you make sure people preparing food do it in a safe, healthy way. But you have no right to hold the same rules on the And I know that all of you have the power to not enforce these so-called rules. And I thank you. And I just recommend that you vote for the people and for our rights. Thank you.
Okay, on deck will be Sarah Jones. Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, I rise again in my personal capacity. I have been a registered Republican since 2002, when I was allowed to vote. I have watched over the last eight or 12 years as members of the Republican Party were named rhinos, that they were a threat to the Republican Party. Today, there is a different animal that threatens the Republican Party. There are ostriches who bury their heads and refuse to pull them out. Ostriches who refuse to acknowledge the efficacy of putting a simple filter in front of a couple of people's mouths to stop or slow the spread of COVID-19. The problem right now is the ostriches, a small minority of Republicans, particularly here in Mojave County. And that has shown that they are a small minority by the vote count in District Four. The vast majority of the people of District Four voted for Supervisor Bishop. A very small vocal minority voted to try and get her out, and continue to try, and they will continue to fail. Because the vast majority of Republicans, even in Mojave County, acknowledge the efficacy of masks and the enforcement issues that are going on in Mojave County to prevent the spread of COVID-19. The Republican Party used to be the party of law and order. For some reason, the ostriches in the party have abandoned law, no longer understand it, and refuse to enforce it. Return the Republican Party to what it should have been, what it always has been, the party of law and order. Governor Ducey's executive orders are the law. They are, they are, they were, he passed them, subject to the authority given him by the legislature. There are processes to challenge that, just like there are processes to challenge the executive orders that Donald Trump made. There are procedures in place that make that difficult at times, just like the procedures that were in place that made it difficult for Democrats, even impossible for Democrats at the national level to block the confirmation of Amy Coney Barrett to the Supreme Court. We are a nation of laws. I urge the board to follow the law, to continue enforcement, to protect the people, to exercise the authority given it by the Arizona Constitution, by the governor of Arizona, and by the US Constitution, to ignore the ostriches who do not understand the law, who do not understand basic logic, and refuse to acknowledge that a mask is simply a filter.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Sarah Jones?
Good afternoon, everybody. Sarah Jones, Lake Havasu City. That was some speech. Wow. We need to get rid of anything that the governor is trying to enforce on us. It is not a law by any means, has nothing to do with Republicans or Democrats. Heavy-handed authoritarian over businesses and restaurants from the Health Department, receiving money. I think everybody should return that money immediately. We are a constitutional republic. We are not somebody to be controlled. We are grownups. We don't need you to tell us to mask up. We don't need you spacing our tables 50%, capacity. We are strong, independent people who are responsible. When you guys take away and come in and harass businesses to shut down or else they'll be fined, that's, that is disgusting. That is terrible. We are all trying to survive out here. If you close down their businesses, they lose their homes, they go hungry, they get on food stamps, and now they're dependent on the government. We want less government. There, this is not a law. Don't act in the tyranny. You guys, we don't want tyranny. We don't want it from the Health Department. It's disgusting. Thousand dollar fine a day. Come in and harass them, scare the client, the patriots away. They're trying to earn money. We're all coming out of a pandemic where we have all been shut down for a long time. And everybody who signed that assertion needs to rescind it now. It is not legally binding. Rescind it. We want less of the tyranny. All right? You guys are elected to be with us, stand with us. Let's unite together and show our community that you guys stand with us. We need to pull apart from the governor. We all can see what is going on, and it needs to stop. Otherwise, we will turn into socialism and communism. We cannot do that. So let's ignore the governor's proclamation, his mandate, any of his orders. Release the citizens all from this grip that you guys have got on them, and stop with the fear and let everybody resume life. When we get sick, we will stay home, chicken noodle soup, rest, and plenty of fluids, is what they have told us in the past at the beginning of this pandemic. That's what we can do. Our hospitals are not overloaded. We are fine. Stop threatening people.
On deck will be Beverly Paul.
Chairman Bishop, members of the board. As a father of five children, it's essential that my kids have a roof over their head. To be classified as a nonessential business and closing their gym for 100 days is an overreach of the government. We have no more than 25 members working out in over 5,100 square feet of space. We have the ability to social distance machines. We use hospital-grade disinfectant for all the surfaces that we use. The front reception gets sanitized after each transaction, our pens, our keypad, everything. AZDHS and Public Health have a tight grip on mask wearing and requirements for gyms, bars, and movie theaters, while they don't have the same jurisdiction in the big box stores, where thousands visit per day with loose requirements. The executive order has caused a financial hardship, as many other people, I'm sure. We've accepted help from family and our church to put food on the table. It's caused unimaginable stress and loss of hope for the future at the heavy hand of the government, should they continue to threaten and single out businesses such as bars, gyms, and movie theaters with substantial fines and court proceedings for complaints by the public that can simply be put in online. A study on almost 3,000 gyms in the US over a period of three months with 49 million check-ins, there's no evidence that positive cases originated in gyms. That infection rate actually is only .0023. That was covered over a period of three months. We can promise you that gyms are not the ones that need to be in the spotlight. In August of this year, when we were allowed to reopen, the COVID-19% positivity, hospital visits and COVID-like illness in Mojave County actually decreased. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, on deck will be Chris Rodardi.
My name is Beverly Paul, and I'm from Golden Valley. And I didn't understand what the attorney was saying at first because of her mask on. I didn't know whether she was saying education or intimidation. Evidently Supervisor Gould had a question about that also. I understand that everyone should have the right to express their Second Amendment right of expression to wear or not wear a mask. Everyone has the right to not patronize any business or store. But tyranny of the minority should not keep me from patronizing that same business. The daily minor mentioned $9.1 million in emergency funds might have to be repaid. Is money more important than people's livelihoods and emotional well-being? I'm old enough to remember when a person would be arrested if he went into a bank wearing a mask. Today, he would be arrested if he didn't wear a mask in a bank. Thank you.
Count Duck, on deck will be Tammy Garrett Rutherford.
Chris Rodardi, Kingman, Arizona. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its power in such form as to them shall seem most likely to effect their safety and happiness. When a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evens as a design to reduce people under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. You took everything away from us, our jobs, our livelihoods, the ability to feed our families, and our future. Small business, the American dream, to invest and make our own way. Family-owned restaurants and bars closed or hanging on by a thread. Forced to comply with ordinances and rules that keep changing, outrageous fines, fear of property liens, turning each other into this, a swift kick to our precious liberties. And now that you've deigned to open up and lift the mask mandate, citizens still trudge the streets, the stores outdoors, and alone in their cars, fully masked and enslaved, all because of a contrived state of emergency. The lifting is very confusing, vague, and ever-changing. I must wear a mask to enter a restaurant, but can remove it when seated? Your indoctrination is complete. Congratulations. Well done. You may think you have won. But there's a growing band of citizens out here, stepping forward, doing the right thing, and who won't, and who can't give up on Mojave County or America. We are called to action, doing our patriotic duty. So to paraphrase John Paul Jones, we have only just begun to fight.
Okay, on deck will be Brett. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, I'm Tammy Rutherford, Kingman, Arizona. I really suck at this, I apologize, but I don't speak well in front of people. But this has got to stop. You guys have us at 50% occupancy. Our bills are at 100%. The mask mandate, the signage, the Health Department, excuse me, I know I'm going to pay for this later, does not educate. They come in, they tell you, do this, do that. You need to put a divider up our clothes on every other table. How big a divider? We don't know. They don't educate, they don't inform you, they're not helping you. They never ask you, as a business that was inspected for this COVID, never once did they ask us, what can we do to help you? They give you a package of papers and say, comply with it. That's not okay. Restaurants and bars are trained for viruses, H, hepatitis, the whole nine yards. We're trained to clean, disinfect. Every touchable surface in our buildings can be cleaned. You can't clean every touchable surface in Walmart. I can't tell you how many people touched that clothing rack or that loaf of bread before I touched it. But every single item in a restaurant that is touched by customers can... But every single item in a restaurant that is touched by customers can be sanitized, can be cleaned. Same goes for bars, same goes for gyms. You guys are, not you guys, the governor order has stopped us at 50% occupancy while our bills are at 100%. Then you force us, tell us, we have to comply. Nobody voluntarily complied with this. We were forced to comply or we had to pay a thousand dollars a day fine. Most of us don't even make a thousand dollars a day in profit. How can you pay a thousand dollars a day in fines? Our employees have families to feed, we have families to feed. You keeping us at 50% occupancy, the mask, whatever, it's your choice. If you don't want to go to my business because we don't wear a mask, that's your choice. If you choose to wear a mask, that should be your choice. It should not be mandated. Their flu. Are you going to mandate people to wear a mask for the flu? Nobody ever has. It's a virus. The health department trains us for sanitary and cleaning. Employees' hours are cut, employees' tips are cut. Take an hour out of your day and watch somebody wearing a mask. Watch how many times they touch their face, because I can tell you in the last hour we have been here, that the ones wearing the mask have touched their face at least 15 to 20 times. Whereas the ones not wearing a mask have not touched their face. Wash your hands. And that's what it boils down to. Wash your hands, people, come on. It's common sense. People depend on restaurants, elderly, retired travelers, visitors, and even the homeless. They don't have stoves to cook, half of them can't cook, they don't have the ability to cook. Bars, that's their escape to get out there and away from everyday life. All right, thank you.
Brett.
Hi, Brent Rutherford, Kingman, Arizona. My wife covered a lot of the bases right there. We were actually voluntary compliant on a lot of things. We did our own research, we did our own education, we got so many different ideas from the state, from the county, from the city, all mixed, all different. No set, you know, how high you want your guidelines, how high you want your plexiglass. There's nothing like that. I see you guys taking your mask on, putting your mask on to do your job better so you can speak clear, hear yourselves talk. That's great. I got a dishwasher sits in the back in a moist, wet environment, has to wear a mask. He's not around nobody. He's an employee, but because he's employed by me, he has to wear a mask and get sick. You guys can sit there without your mask on, you're employees of the county. What's the difference? You guys choose to do what you want to do based on a broad spectrum of fear. The governor started this early on. As my wife said, we're trained in restaurants. You don't have plexiglass down the middle of the hallways in Walmart. You got one entrance open for exiting and entering, why not both? How can you possibly social distance when you got everybody in one entrance? That don't make no sense to me. I got people going to the hospital because they had a mask on with a water spot on their lungs. They go in the hospital, they get told they got to take the mask off because they're setting out the oxygen levels. They said the mask caused the water spot on their lung. They're not that healthy. I agree with them in some incidences. I disagree with them most of the time. I can tell you right now, we don't have, in my restaurant, a lot of people coming in there sniffing, coughing, sneezing. There used to be a fear in the past where these guys were kind of disgusting. But now people's lives are on the line, they use a little more common sense. There are people not in there sick. They're separating themselves. But I can't expect my 120-pound waitress to be the social police. They're not going to go in there and fight in 300-pound truckers. It's the cops' job. And you want to hold me accountable for what the public is doing? Because you can't hold the public accountable. You want to threaten me with fines, but leave the public alone? How is that right? Why don't you find that public? Why don't you find the guy coming in there without a mask? He's not getting a ticket, you want to ticket me? I did nothing to force him to come in there without a mask or with a mask. It's not my responsibility, I'm not his mom. They got their own rights. I leave them to it. If they die for it, they die for it. If they live for it, they live for it. None of my business. That's their life. Thank you.
Patrick Shaner. Then on deck will be Terry Thompson.
I'm Patrick Shaner, I live in Bullhead City. Thank you for allowing me to speak, chairman and supervisors and the staff. I'm not quite sure where to start, but I'll get rolling and it'll tell me when to shut up, so we're good. At the risk of bending one of your rules, I would like to express my dismay at somebody who seems to think that we call people rhinos. I'm a Republican, I don't call people that, that's calling people names, and I don't appreciate being called an ostrich by you. Now, I'm sorry, I think that I violated a rule because I'm supposed to talk about the agenda item at hand. I've heard some really great discussion here today about things like making healthy people wear masks, quarantining healthy people. That's not public health, that's tyranny. And this is where we have been for the last umpteen months here, ever since the governor was ordered by five big city mayors, you better put these restrictions on. He did, gladly, actually. And we still have them. They were supposed to be temporary, they were supposed to be like a month at most. And here we are, what? It's been March. Okay? So there's been a whole lot of overstepping of promised boundaries. There's some discussion here, can a governor's EO have the impact of a statute voted on by the legislature and signed by the governor? I don't really know, to tell you the truth. I'm a layperson, I'm not a lawyer. I find it interesting that the person we have charged to keep track of these laws hasn't begun to think about some of the obvious questions that have been arising over the last several months. You don't, you don't know if we're, if we're going to have funds that we have to return? How could you not know that? How could you have not looked at that? Now, the item at hand. Discussions about how do we go from here, right? What, what do you, as our elected, charged board members, going to do? I learned a lot of things today, okay? I didn't know what 36 meant, now I do. And I question whether or not it's appropriate to apply that to a governor's EOs with no vote of any legislatures of any kind. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shaner.
Please, please remove the thousand-dollar fine at bare minimum. Thank you.
On deck will be Becky Walker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Terry Thompson from Kingman, Arizona, inmate number 6090022. That is the $150,000 liquor license which I'm handcuffed by right now. I would like to, I'd like to start and talk about my business a little bit and how COVID has affected us. We've heard plenty of cries to, to health and whatnot, and to y'all. Right now, my restaurant is down 63%. I had 48 employees in March, I have 14. I work seven days a week. I, I close my dish pits down, I open my store, I turn my ovens on, I make my dough, and brew my beer. I'm housed at 312 Beale Street, better known as Ricketty Cricket, the staple of downtown Kingman, Arizona, and I built an enterprise in Kingman. And this enterprise is ready to crash. We're about done. I hear people like Mr. Jones that stated to his opinion, but I have a note outside of my door. Just don't come in if you don't want to. Please, just don't come in. My family's torn from this, and this is very hard for us. So with the liquor board, I just want to remind you all that by doing what you're getting ready to do, I hold a federal license, a state license, and a county license. My state license will be revoked the minute I do not have my, my staff, my inmates, in masks. My staff's sick from it, and I'm sick from it. And I don't know how much longer I can hold on. So I just asked the board that. I get it, you know, a lot of these people don't want to put masks on. But my colleagues that are in the same boat with liquor licenses, I assure you, when the liquor department walks in, they don't care, I'm only a number to them, and they will shut me down. And without that, I have nothing. So we teeter on the side of, in March, I was managing in pride and enthusiasm, and today, I go to work and I manage in fear every day, every day, until I go to sleep. Until the next bill comes in, it's not easy. And I just ask that we work together on getting rid of these masks in fear of keeping staff and families paid right now. Thank you.
Becky Walker. Becky Walker. Okay. The last speaker then will be Danny Van Poel.
Thank you, members of the board. I appreciate having the opportunity to talk before you and everyone that's here. Right now, I am not a business owner, however, I know a lot of people in Golden Valley, Kingman, Bullhead City, that are business owners. And based on everything I've observed here today, I am amazed to see that none of you are even on the same page. And you're not. These two women right here have been given a lot of power. Way too much. And I'd like to know if they have any health backgrounds. Because I believe right now I can prove beyond a doubt that this little bit of power that they now possess, that you're not even sure of what right, what power you even have, it's appalling. But they are very, very abusive in what little power they have right now, and they're destroying businesses because of it. It's a fact. They have caused the closure of businesses because of this thousand-dollar-a-day mandate that they're putting on these little businesses. They're destroying the businesses, not the pandemic. They're the pandemic. They are. And the very laws, I am, I cannot believe that none of you checked yourselves with information before you came to this meeting, knowing what was going to be discussed. You don't know. You're the city attorney. You should have already done your homework to be able to answer these questions. All of you should have. As a citizen, I am appalled. I cannot believe this. You know, when you rescinded that emergency order, that 9.1 million in federal funds, I have confirmed, has not been spent. You are no longer entitled to it. And you have to give it back to the government. You have no alternative but to do that, and you know it. And I dare you to try to spend it now. I was an investigator for 28 years. I am not ignorant to the law by any means. But I am appalled at the majority here today of what I have observed. Frankly, I mean, no wonder why we're in such a bad shape. For four months, I have collected every single newspaper, and I have kept track of every one of your movements, and none of you are on the same page at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Van Poel, your time is up.
Thank you. But if you think they're not abusing that power of this thousand-dollar-a-day, maybe we should talk more and I could prove to you the business that they've crushed. There's one right now that they put out business in Golden Valley that they even go to. Thank you all.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you get the Ricketty Cricket guy to come back up? I'm so sorry, I didn't catch your name, so you get pegged with your business name. I was unclear on your statement. Were you concerned that if we lift it, if we cease to enforce the governor's mandate through our health department, that you, your business would be affected?
That is correct, Supervisor Gould. The liquor license holds a deer carrot over our head, and the minute we violate anything the governor says, my license is subject to, to be suspended by the liquor board at a moment's notice. I've been contacted by the liquor board before. They send you a letter and they say, somebody turns you in. These are with all, with all without merit, of course, because if I'm going to be fined or if I'm going to lose my business, then I damn right better be able to face my accuser, and I can't.
So if we cease to enforce it, that would not prevent you from still following it, though?
Correct. I will be a good steward with my staff of the mask mandate. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to negate government or anything like that, but my staff will remain to be good stewards based on livelihoods. I don't believe that, that me coming out here and, and making a big speech about politics is in my employees' best interest, because I have to pay, they have, need money. So I don't want to take a side one way or the other. I want you to be versed that you know that when somebody comes in without a mask on, there's a sign out front of my, my door that says, I'm not the mask police. We're handcuffed by Governor Ducey, and we won't ask you to put one on. But if you don't feel safe, just don't come in. But don't complain on us. And that's what we're seeing, is we're seeing the complaints rolling in because my staff refuses to, as Mr. Rutherford said, get in a fight with a 300-pound truck driver. We're not trying to do that.
Sure.
So it will impact liquor licensing the minute Mojave County knows that there's, if the confusion isn't clear, that restaurants and bars are going to be subject to this mask mandate by the governor because of that piece of property we own called the liquor license.
So you're concerned that you'd have more confrontation with your potential customers than about them wearing masks in your business?
We have confrontation with them every day, Supervisor Gould. I, I actually, I, I'm in the hospitality industry for hospitality because I'm supposed to be able to put fires out because I burnt your pizza. But I find myself that I hate people right now.
Sure.
I can't even deal with the public anymore because of everything floating around. So I, I find that communicating right now, nobody knows what direction to go. So I just tell my staff, have your mask on, please, and, and if the liquor board comes in, I had to sign my waivers away with the state. They called me on that because I wouldn't sign their, their piece of paper to say I can operate, but they collected their money this month to renew my liquor license, I assure you that, and their tax money, so.
So essentially, you had to waive part of your rights to operate, didn't you, to open back up?
Absolutely, we're completely waived. And at a moment's notice, with that waiver, I could be shut down.
Sure. You know, and that was not the position that you were in before the executive order was laid upon you?
Absolutely not. I possess a liquor license that doesn't require food to be served, and I have to serve food to be open. I can't, I can't stay open past nine o'clock because I don't have enough staff members. So we close our kitchens at nine o'clock on a Friday night, and my store's closed. While there are bad actors as quote violators, I don't see them as that, I see them as just trying to do what they need to do to survive right now. I refuse to do that as being a prior law enforcement officer. I refuse to, to get on the side of disrespecting law. And I must say, with all the negligence against the county, I was visited by the county, and they're managing in fear. Those people were the nicest people to me. I could tell they were just told to do a job. They weren't disrespectful to me. They, they, they were not. They were telling me what I needed to do to stay up on everything. But as far as like- But as far as like, unless you really deal with them and they come in, I didn't see that they were ever disrespectful to me. I could see that they were mandated to do their job, what they were supposed to do.
Sure. We're on unplowed ground, so it's all new to them, too.
Correct, correct. But I was treated with the utmost respect from the people that visited me.
When you opened back up, did you have trouble getting your employees to come back to work since they were on enhanced unemployment?
My employees and my employment benefits have gone through the roof. I could not get any of the staff back. We are on a continual hiring basis, and I can't, I can't find enough staff to, responsible enough staff that want to come in and actually put a day's work in, because they can be paid more money doing something else. And I see that the restaurant industry actually flipped a switch, and a lot of these people that were making enhanced benefits have found that they can find a different career over that time that they are off work. So they've, they've elected to find new careers, because they were being paid enough money to be off work by the government, so they're into new careers. Because the service industry, if many of you are not in it, it's a quick flip. You could be in, you can be in a kitchen one day, and then my kitchen the next day, then serving this table one day, and then you see the same person the next day at another restaurant. And the industry is going to take a beating for it. I'm staying ahead of the, I'm trying to stay ahead of it with trying to make virtual kitchens and let you order from your phones, but I get nothing but disrespect from customers for it, for trying to change my styles. They want that one-on-one person, but there's just not enough people. So an operation like mine, it's, it takes millions of dollars a year to operate such a business, and when that's not coming in, there's no other thing to do but to close the doors.
In that money, you're not bringing in the tax dollars that you once were bringing in either.
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. And I'm not trying to grill you, I'm just trying to-
No, I-
-get some points on the record.
I have, I have a select few of employees. Every one of my staff members, I pride myself in giving every one of my staff members, I have 40 hours a week to support their families right now. They're all on a 40-hour a week schedule. So I don't have any part-time staff members at this time, voluntary part-time staff members.
I found it interesting that we were determining which businesses were essential businesses and which were not essential. But I would argue that every job is essential to that person that's out there trying to make a living and feed his family.
I would have to agree. I have not, my wife is in there running the store while I'm here right now, and she doesn't know the first thing about flipping pizzas, but she's doing it today. And I'll tell you this, if you ever come in my store, you'll see me open, you'll see me to the clothesline, you'll see me lock the doors, and you'll see me, you'll see me open them up in the morning. And there's not going to be anything changed with that right now. I don't see any light at the end of the future for restaurant businesses if the state can't get, if we, if I can't open tables and seat people.
Yeah, we just need to learn to live with this. It's going to be around forever, and we just need to get back to work. You know, we can't, we can't operate in this atmosphere anymore. And I'm afraid with the potential that we elected a new president, that we're going to see a mandate come down from the federal government, similar to the mandate that came down to the state, attached with money to get us to be the enforcers of a national mask mandate. And that should be something that we should be thinking about, too, and think about the destruction of our freedom and the destruction of our businesses because of it.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Supervisor Watson, did you have a question for the speaker?
Yes, I do have a question for you, sir. Comment first. You have one of the finest establishments in Kingman, Arizona. Been frequenting there several times and have enjoyed it.
Thank you, Supervisor.
My question to you is this, and I've held a liquor license, and so I know the specter of that board. How will our action, if it were to not enforce that, how would that protect you from the liquor control board?
I think if you, if today you decide that we're not going to follow the governor's orders as far as, as far as mask mandate and enforcing numbers in restaurants and stores, I think I'm going to have to just probably wait out and see what happens as patrons come in, because many patrons are confused. I'm noticing confusion by most that they don't understand why we close early, they don't understand these things, and it's just because of that you can't be open in the industry if you have liquor. The only place you can catch coronavirus is in a restaurant. We all know this. It's in a restaurant and in a bar. We know this, that we can go into big box stores, and it's not available there. However, I have to serve food. If the liquor board walks in and I do not have food being cooked at that time, or someone's ordering food or eating, then I am in violation of the order.
Okay. One other question, and I'm sure you take every precaution to make sure that each one of your customers is well protected, and I'm sure you probably currently have your staff wear a mask, or at least in the kitchen. Is that correct?
We are masked up. My kitchen is masked up anytime they are out in the public. If we're, if we're dealing with food, we're wearing gloves, as stated earlier, there's gloves everywhere. And I'll tell you, Nitrile gloves now, what people don't understand, gloves, what used to cost me $23 a case is $90 for a case of gloves. It's horrible, and the minute I raise my burger price a dollar, I'm the bad guy again. So the cost of doing business definitely isn't, it's definitely outweighing shutting down rather than just fighting this, because many of us can't fight this much longer. And it really weighs on your psyche every day when you're a restaurant owner, and you're trying to figure out how to get the next bill, because it was stated earlier, we are paying 100% of our bills. I trust me this, that Unisource wants their $10,000 a month in electricity, and they don't, there's no help there.
I have one more question for you, and I really appreciate your point of view. I was in private industry for 40 years before coming to this desk. My question to you is, if Mojave County were to drop the mandate for the $1,000 fine, would you, or would you continue to have your staff wear protection for their customers, for your customers?
Yes, as per, as per the liquor board requirements. Yes. Do I want to? No. Do I have to? Yes. And that's where I say, I can't put my political opinion out there to jeopardize my staff's income, if that makes sense to you all.
But you also, you're protecting your customers, too. Is that correct?
My customers, I started, I got ahead of this thing early, and I built socially distant tables in there. Each direction you're facing at a table, you're seven feet away from the next person facing the same direction. So we have our signage posted, we have all that posted. But what I'm seeing is the utter lack of what most of these people are sitting here for. They don't care. They're coming out to come out, and they don't want to be handcuffed. So that's what I'm, that's where we run into the, my staff gets assaulted verbally every day for wearing a mask.
Right. And I understand that. What I'm trying to get to is protecting customers that make a choice to come to your establishment.
Correct.
You've told me that you intend to protect those customers through continued use of either a shield or a mask.
Yes. And Supervisor Watson, if you come by later, you'll see, the city has been kind enough to grant some of the businesses grants to build outdoor parklets for people that feel safer outside. So we do offer a virtual table, where you don't need to talk to anybody, you can order everything from your phone, you can sit down outside, you cannot even see anyone until they drop your food off. They'll be wearing a mask when they do drop your food off with clean washed hands. We, we're not going to, we're not going to discredit anyone during this. We are going to try and keep up with the safety that we need to, that, from the science that we have understood, and at the same time, not completely go against our local governments. So we, I'm not trying to blacken the eye of my staff.
Thank you very much for all your testimony.
You're very welcome.
Terry, I also am one of your customers, and I, I was seated at your parklet, and we were able to order pizza on, on our telephone, and you're right, it was, it was a very nice addition, and I want to thank you for being a man of the law. I know your past professional history as a law enforcement officer, and, and I think Mr., or Supervisor Watson got the point across, regardless of what we do here today, you are under the thumb of Governor Ducey's executive orders. We cannot stop that for, for anybody. We don't have mask mandates anywhere in Mojave County now, except for what the governor has ordered or what private enterprise has decided to do themselves. So there is no mask mandate in Mojave County. There is no mask mandate in any of the cities within Mojave County. So I just wanted to make that clear, and thank you for what you've done to adjust your business so that we can all enjoy that pizza. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus-
Thank you very much.
Say something.
Thank you. I really quickly want to say, when, when we were working with the gyms, Josh, and trying to get the bars open, I was working with the governor's office, and I was like, "You have no idea what's happening for these small businesses." And he said to me, "I, I understand." And I said, "No, you don't, because you get a paycheck." And I think that's one of the problems that we have. I mean, people who are small, I had a small business at one time in my life, I get it, you know? And it's only going to get worse. Prop 208 passed, right? So small businesses are going to be hit, and if Biden gets into office, he's going to retract the Trump tax cuts. So our businesses are going to be hit from all sides. It's like, it's like we are terrorizing them. And it is so unfair, and I don't know how you guys do it, but I wanted to ask about your signage. So what does it say when you walk in to your establishment?
We're following the county's protocol currently that they provided with, masks are required to enter. And then I have additional signage on top of the entrance of my restaurant that basically says, "We're handcuffed by the governor's orders," and that while we will remain good stewards and wear masks, we're not going to ask you to put on or put a mask on or while you're maneuvering around the store. My staff, my staff is not there to get in conflicts with people.
Right.
And that's where I'm finding it very difficult, because I can't name these accusers, I can't name these people that are calling us in. And I assure you, they're not even people that are in my store. They're seeing social media pictures, and they're just reacting to them. That's where many reactions are, because the people that come in, I'm seeing, are not there to violate my restaurant. They're there to eat. They know that there's going to be people walking around without masks possibly, and they understand that. So I do have all the, I do have all the county's paperwork and the state requirement paperwork up, including the attestation form that I signed, that if I don't follow the state liquor board, that I'll be shut down.
Mr. Thompson, if you were sitting where I am, what would you want us to do today?
I would ask that you use good faith to educate the public with whatever your decision be it, and that there are people like me that aren't going to be able to follow suit. But I also don't feel like it's fair, I feel like if you take the mask off, I'll get more, I'll get more patrons, I'll get more people in, and people are just going to understand that, that, I'll, I'll take the complaints, because when the liquor board does come in, I assure you, my masks will be on on my staff members. However, they probably won't be on on half the patrons that are in there.
But once they're sitting, they don't have to wear them.
And that's, that's, that's that position where this is airborne, from what we understand.
So we're just really asking people to wear the masks in, sit down, and I've been in a ton of restaurants since this whole thing. It's a farce, everybody knows it's a farce.
Correct.
And is there any, is there any signage, like when we do health inspections, you give them a letter, A, B, C, D, or whatever? Is there any way we can work with the state and do something like, you know, "Enter at your own risk," or "This, this establishment has chosen not to abide by the executive order, enter at your own risk"? I mean, I mean, again, like someone said, "We are adults, and we're being treated like children. We are responsible for our own health. Everyone out there is responsible for their own health. We are responsible for your freedom." And we are doing a lousy job. I agree with you. Totally agree with you.
I never said that. You guys are all in a hard spot.
No, no. I mean, I'm not just talking about this board, I'm talking about government in general, because, and again, no one's, there's no bad actors in this. Everyone's doing what they think is the right thing to do, coming from different, different experiences in life, of course.
Correct.
Right now, we're talking about the small businesses, and without our small businesses, we're nothing.
Well, when you throw darts in a dark room trying to hit a bullseye like Governor Ducey's doing, that's what's, that's what's deflating us all.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Supervisor Angus, I just wanted to, that's okay, Terry, thank you. I just wanted to, excuse me. I just wanted to point out that if we encourage our public and our businesses to violate the governor's executive orders, and they do that, and the business gets in trouble for it, we're kind of facilitating going against the governor's orders, and they're the ones that are going to get in trouble if they do that. So I just wanted to point out, we're not asking or recommending, I'm not asking or recommending anybody to, to go against the governor's executive orders as a result of what we're telling you. Absolutely not. We may not agree with the governor's orders, but they are the governor's orders. Right? Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My ancestors fought a revolution against a king, and I'm pretty sure that was illegal. But I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Well, right now, I'm going to make a motion that we at least get rid of that, that hammer of $1,000 a day that we instituted as a board, and that I wasn't present for, so I believe I can bring it back up. It doesn't have to, does it have to be reconsidered, or can I just do it as a different motion?
Just do it as a different motion.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we rescind that.
You're not rescinding, you're just, aren't you going to be asking to not enforce $1,000 per-
All right, whatever the language. So not enforce the $1,000 a day?
Let me, if I could have Attorney Knutson come up here, we just want direction, we want guidance, you know?
I'm just telling you, I'm just-
I know.
I'm just taking back what we did.
I know, I know. I just, and that's why I want to make sure we get the language right. I just want to make sure that we get it right. Okay? So basically, what we're trying to say is, we do steps one through three, and then not go to four, or one through two. I want to make sure that we get it right. That's why I'm doing that.
Okay.
I think it's the discretion of the board, as it's been all along, to have any steps. The $1,000 a day that was adopted by this board is in step three. The other part of step three is that there would be an order to comply issued for a business who's failed to come into compliance. If you remove step three, then you would remove the order to comply portion of it as well. Is it, I just want to clarify, you can remove, it's my understanding that you could remove the $10,000 from any further enforcement, just take it out of step three, in the same way that from the beginning, the board could have voted to not impose any penalties. But my question is, is it from this point forward, or is it to rescind what's been already imposed?
Well, if it's, if it's going to be in the motion, I'd like to put rescind.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. So what's the, what is the proper wording? I'm still not clear.
But rescind the requirement, rescind, rescind the enforcement of the executive orders as it relates to the fining of the businesses?
The $10,000 a day penalty, or, excuse me, the $1,000 a day up to $10,000 penalty.
That's what you're doing.
All right. Rescind the executive orders enforcement?
As it relates to the fining-
As it relates to the fine of-
$1,000 per day.
$1,000 a day up to $10,000.
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Knutson, that still gives you the ability to go to court, correct?
Supervisor Johnson, the step three and step four would still be, or stage three and stage four would still be in place with that motion, and so, yes, ultimately, for a business that chose to remain out of compliance, it would leave that possibility open. Again, we've never used that, wouldn't use it, but in the most exigent circumstance.
Correct. And what we're discussing today is one business in Mojave County who hasn't complied.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear everything.
He said that's relates to just one business in Mojave County?
Yes. Of the 92 complaints that have come in, only one has resulted in moving to stage four, which includes the $1,000 a day penalty. So 91 efforts have resulted in compliance, one have not, has not.
I believe you, at this point, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
We do. Any other questions or comments, Supervisor Johnson?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I do believe that the, the fine of $1,000 a day and $10,000 is excessive. I really do. But at the same token, we have a responsibility to protect the public. protect the public. And the gentleman from Ricky Cricket did a fine job explaining what he does personally in his restaurant to protect his customers. And I'm hoping that each of the restaurants and bars would do the same. So I think my position would be, I would certainly recommend that we, we can reduce the, uh, the excessive fine, $1,000, but at the same token, we must understand that it's our responsibility to protect the public. So.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus.
So has, with all this contact tracing, have we gotten many back, traced back to restaurants or bars or gyms?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Angus, I can't speak for gyms specifically. I do know that we have had cases come from restaurants.
How many?
I can't speak to that at the moment. I can try to get that information for you, though.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chairman. Denise, the restaurant cases that you speak of, are those patrons or are they employees?
So they started out with some, um, mostly staff within those facilities, yes.
So it's mainly the staff, not?
Primarily. That would be correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
That was early on.
That's correct.
Right. And so, uh, from my experience, from my district, I know that they were very responsible. There were a couple of restaurants, they closed, they brought in commercial cleaners. I mean.
That's correct.
They need their businesses to be clean or else no one's gonna come in.
Correct, correct. And they, and they need healthy employees.
That's their business. Who else is gonna protect their business? So I think everyone has done a pretty great job and we should let them keep doing what they're doing, like Mr. Thompson and, and all the other people, um, because I think 92, I, I have no problem with you going and instructing and things like that. It's when we became, because of this anonymous complaint stuff. Are they, just out of curiosity, are they staying the same, the number? Are they going up? Are they going down, the number of anonymous complaints?
The number of anonymous, so the complaints that are coming in from ADHS are all anonymous and we don't receive, um, more than a handful of those every week. Um, and there's a lot of repetitiveness to those. We'll get two or three complaints sometimes for one single business in that particular week's report. Uh, majority of those complaints coming in are called in or emailed in via, um, through environmental health. So in those instances, we have not, uh, taken names because that has been our practice. However, uh, looking at the, um, moving forward, um, we're working together to look at statute and what that requires of us.
If I might just add to that, Supervisor Angus, we, um, one very positive thing to come of this is that we will be looking at complaints system-wide, not just for COVID, in terms of the anonymous complaint system. It has been allowed at the state level, but it is our intent to come into line with 25-1010 and eliminate the opportunities for anonymous complaints, um, across Mojave County's complaint system. Not just COVID, it could be food, it could be trash or junk. So a, a much broader positive will come from this in terms of coming into line with the strict interpretation of the statute.
That's pretty good news.
Have to be named.
Yeah, good.
Madam Chairman.
Wait, I'm just, I mean, one more comment. You know, we talked about this early on, to giving more discretion to the, um, inspectors because they know these businesses, they know which ones are, you know, don't come into compliance a lot. Is there any way we can do that?
Supervisor Angus, you know, we're not trying to be inflexible, but we're also trying not to leave a lot of subjectivity to things because that leaves interpretation and that creates some, some issues, of course, with how we enforce.
Well, again, it's just a snapshot in time. When an inspector goes into a restaurant, that's just that moment. I mean, and they don't have complete control over what's going on at their restaurant every given moment. I mean, people come in, they're just walking in, you could see people walking without a mask, but that might be, you know, stopped by the time they get in. So again, our inspectors know the management, they know who does a good job and who maybe, you know, could get better. So that's really what I'm talking about. I mean, it's, it, it, it is all kind of objective.
Well, I, I think that the reason that we've developed the checklist, for an example, we do realize it's an observation. When they walk in, it's what they observe and that's what they have to document, no different than when they go into a food inspection. Now, the difference that we've seen here, um, is that when we go into a restaurant, well, actually, it's not different. Let me, now that I think about it a little bit more. When we go into a restaurant, if we observe a behavior that we know is not following food code, we document that and we correct it, but we also indicate on the sheet that it was corrected. Um, but we do require a follow-up after that. Um, and in this case, we go in, it's what we observe is what we document and even though they correct the behavior in that moment, we still need to document what we observe. And so that's why we have the follow-up inspection, so that 48 hours later, we come back and if they're still, um, enforcing those measures and compliant, then we just write it off and it's NA and we move on.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Burley or Director Burley, we, we're talking about giving people a break and coming out and it's a snapshot in time, but the issue that's been brought up today is one individual who refused to go along with any suggestions that you had to correct anything. So it, it's not the majority or pretty much 99.9% of the businesses in Mojave County who are refusing. It's just one that's refused. And I think the downside that we need to remember too, and Supervisor Watson kind of brought it up, um, today in El Paso County, Texas, they brought in 10 mobile morgues because of the increase in COVID-19 deaths. So while we want to make sure our businesses are able to run, we still have an obligation to protect the health and safety of our people in the county. Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson, that is correct.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Watson.
I'd like to address the issue one more time. Uh, we're looking at a motion and a second. Would there be any consideration to, uh, change your motion to add that any establishment that is not concurrent with, uh, comply, complying with COVID-19 recommendations that could be posted on the outside of the establishment? This is a warning to the public to say, look, there's a possibility that there's someone in my establishment that's not wearing a mask, could have, could have COVID-19.
I, I think that, I know, we talked about this earlier and we would have to, you know, we'd have to really talk about that. And I know, I don't think that should be part of this motion.
That's why we're here today is to really talk about that.
Well, then we talk about signage. I mean, I don't think it should be attached to this motion, though.
Okay, then I know where I'm voting.
Hey, any other comments? We have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Well, I'm the first to vote, but I'm gonna be the first one to make sure that we protect the public health. No.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
And Chairman Bishop?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Uh, I move that we reduce the $500 fine to a $50 fine with a maximum of a $500 fine.
Is that $1,000 or $500?
$50.
Would it be a, uh, maybe a math challenge today?
It's $1,000 to $10,000, so you would reduce it down to 50 to 500.
That's what I thought. 50 and 500.
And I'd be amenable to go a little lower, if that's the case.
We can go 25.
Do I hear 10?
Well, we still need to make sure that we're protecting the public and that's the important thing, so.
So what, what's the vote?
I'll second your motion of, of 50 and?
50 and 500. Lower. About 10 and? Uh, I've gotten, I know, I've been waived, uh.
Get the audience to, to please be quiet.
Let's go with 50.
Press your luck, you've got a second.
So I move that the 500, or the $1,000 fine be reduced to a $50 fine with a maximum of $500.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Mary Nun, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Watson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any further discussion? Any further motions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I could just have one moment if I could talk to?
Yes.
To one of the other attorneys?
I believe this is called a sidebar.
In the meantime, Madam Chairman.
So in, in the meantime, I just want to thank you all for coming today, for giving your, your comments to us, letting us know how you feel. Um, again, a reminder, we have no mask mandate from Mojave County or from any of our cities. Uh, the only mask date now that's being enforced is the governor's executive orders. So there shouldn't be any confusion and that's one of the reasons why I voted to, uh, lift the, uh, the, uh, mask mandate that we held within the county buildings. And that's why you're not wearing a mask in here today unless you choose to, is because that is the only mask requirement that Mojave County ever voted on and ever passed was to wear a mask within Mojave County buildings. So that's gone. There's no mask mandate in Mojave County other than the governor's executive orders and a personal choice of a business owner. So. Madam Chair? Mr. Esplin?
I think Supervisor Angus had, had an item.
Um, I, I want to ask if, at our next meeting, which I believe will be Monday, right? We're not having a Thursday meeting. Um, if we could.
I don't think we have a meeting Monday.
Uh, we from, yeah, it's Monday, a regular meeting.
Okay.
That, um, when we get to our COVID thing, can we get some?
I'm, I'm sorry, Supervisor Angus, um, once you guys took the, the declaration out and the COVID meetings out, there is no COVID item anymore on any agenda at this point in time.
Oh.
So there would, if you wanted something on it, it would have to be a specific item.
I would like the, you know, administration to come back and I'd like to hear from a state representative, from, um, I don't, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this, but from Governor Ducey's office, um, just talking about the future and how long this, that this is planning to go on, like what, we've said this all the time and that gentleman said, we're not on the same page and we don't know these things. Well, we don't know these things because they don't tell us. We don't know what the end game is. We don't know what they're waiting for. Is it no deaths? Is it no cases? We don't know. And I want to know what they think. Like when is, what's the end game? When will this go away? What's the measure? I mean, I remember asking this question in March or April. What are we waiting for?
What I would suggest is that you work with administration to put an item on the agenda, just like the normal course that we do things, going through the administration, going through and, and giving it to the clerk of the board in, in the proper manner of things. I don't know if you can get it done by this Monday. I think you're looking for something probably at the December meeting, but I'd recommend you go through the proper things of submitting a board action form and getting all prepared, work with county administration to do that.
Okay. Maybe work with CSA and see what, what they can help us with.
Um, if I could bring back one item though, Chairman Bishop?
Yes, go ahead.
So, uh, what we would propose is another motion. There is currently one business that has already received that $1,000 fine. We recommend that you rescind that. It's up to you if you wish, but rescind it to make it in line with what you just passed, so that it would be a $50 provision rather than the $1,000 as it currently stands.
Supervisor Gould?
I, I move that we make the fine, the new $50 fine retroactive to apply to anyone that's been cited.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairman, I had a question first.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ryan, did we find out what other counties had accepted the, um, the intergovernmental agreement for the enforcement along with the money?
That was the one, that was the one that Public Health got for about $20,000, I think?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I'll ask though. I'll, I'll certainly inquire.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned.
Has left the conference.